I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Your call.
Okay. Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
And I just sent Councilmember Payne Donovan the link, so I believe he'll be joining us shortly.
Okay. So do we need to have him?
I think if we just give him a couple of minutes.
And we can always just say that he's joined us, right? Okay. Okay. Then shall we go on to the next item, which is the city manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Couple of things to mention this evening. So behind the police department over here in Veterans Park, we have several storage sheds that have been there since the 80s, but they sit on top of concrete bunkers that were there or installed sometime in the 50s, I imagine. So those sheds are going to be demolished here shortly, but the bunkers will remain. They, at one point, instead of removing them, we filled them with more concrete. So that would be a tall order to remove those, but they'll remain in the ground. That's gonna, that work's gonna start here soon as part of the Transit Corridor Connection Project. So I wanted you to be aware of that. We are working on internal and external messaging about the wildfire smoke protection rules. Those go into effect, I believe, on January 15th, didn't they? Went into effect January 15th. So a lot of the communication about the air quality is going to come from Puget Sound Clean Air Agency and the EPA itself, but we need to make sure we message that to our employees, particularly the ones that work primarily outside and provide protections for them, doing that as we head into wildfire season here before too long. Want to remind everybody and say that we'll see you at the public forum next Tuesday here in this room to talk about the Evergreen Playfields. And we did change according to the public online commenting rules. We have a different set of rules for council meetings and for planning commission meetings and those kind of things where registration is required 24 hours previous, and that's in response to the unfortunate hate speech incidents we've seen. However, because these public forums on the 13th and on the 20th for the Upper Plateau Veterans Park, along with an upcoming budget priorities meeting that we want to hold with the community, those meetings are more conversational. So we won't allow comment, direct comment online for those forums, but we will allow people to type questions into the chat, and we will answer them at the meeting once we see those, and we'll be monitoring. But we wanted to make sure it's trying to balance communicating with the government, communicating with your government, and making sure we hear from our community while not tolerating those hate speech incidents. So we're doing our best to thread the needle there, and if there's best practices that come up, we'll institute those. And I'm very happy to report that on Monday, the 12th, construction is going to start on 66th. So we sent an alert out, talked to many of our partners. It's an infrastructure investment, a huge infrastructure investment that we've been waiting a long time to do, and that is going to get started. It will cause some disruption for a while, but we're glad to finally get that project started. Wanted to remind everybody about the Lunar New Year and the Black History Month events at the library coming up. Attend those if you have time to do so. And let's see here. Wanted to welcome our new officer, Abdullah Answar, to the force. We are now full. All of our police department positions that are funded have been filled, and we're very happy to have him here. We did a swearing-in ceremony Tuesday morning, and that was, that was great. It was a lot of fun. And in the next couple of meetings, you'll see a mock-up of our newly designed website. So we're doing a refresh on that based on our contract with our vendor. We have an opportunity to refresh every, every several years, and it's coming up, coming up here soon, and you'll be able to see that probably at your first meeting in March, but we'll lock that date in as we get closer. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Tell us more about the budget priority meeting that you mentioned.
Yeah, so prior to the council retreat on April 27th, where we'll be discussing council's priorities for the 25, 2020, what, excuse me, 2025, '26 budget, we wanted to make sure that we engage our community and find out what community priorities are to help inform council and staff's discussion about how we design that budget and accomplish the projects that the community and council feel are important. So there'll be more information coming out about that soon. We do have the date set for April 2nd, and we're putting together those materials for council review.
All right. Anyone else?
I have a question. We, we got an email saying that we're going to have a goodbye party for Harley.
Yes.
And he's going to Snohomish County. What?
Yeah.
What's going on here?
So several months ago, Chief Caw and, and I talked, the problem that we have, and as much as we love to have Harley around, it's Harley's a narcotics dog. And with the changes in state law regarding narcotics in, in Washington State, and because of the fentanyl crisis, which is a pharmaceutical, that Harley cannot detect, we've only deployed Harley and used Harley nine times over the last 18 months. So in a discussion with the police chief and I, we decided at that point that the resources are more appropriately spent for a traffic patrol officer, and we wanted to find a good home for, for Harley to go where she can do what she's been trained to do. And Snohomish County in the jail offered us that best opportunity.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to miss coming around. I, I sit on the floor of my office and play with her as long as she lets me, but we feel it's the best use of the resources and the best work that she's, she's going to be able to do is at the jail.
Well, it's one of those, I don't know why, but I saw that email and I went, no. It's one of the, you know, I'm not a dog person, but boy, that, that dog really got my heart.
Yeah. Friendly, for sure.
Uh huh. Okay. So now we know. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much. Next is the presentation of the Economic Development Strategic Plan with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. So tonight, I just wanted to introduce our consultants for the Economic Development Strategy. They are the same group of folks that are working on our economic element of the comprehensive plan, so there's continuity and a common thread running between those two guiding documents for us. We've put together, or they have put together, a presentation for you this evening, and we want this to be more conversational and make sure we're headed in the right direction before this strategy gets adopted along with the comprehensive plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to these two fine gentlemen, and we can get started.
So, good evening, council. My name is Chris Zahas. I'm president and principal of Leland Consulting Group. We are the consultants that Jeff told you about. We are based in Portland. We're a national consulting firm, though. We work for mainly cities and other levels of government on a range of economic and land use and real estate projects. So we work everywhere from the citywide level, like a comprehensive plan that we're also working with you on, all the way down to site-specific redevelopments and public-private partnerships. But tonight, we're here to talk about the Economic Development Strategic Plan. David Fisk here, I'll let him introduce himself in just a moment, will lead you through the presentation and discussion. And like we said at the beginning, we really want this to be interactive, so feel free to interrupt us with questions. We have a series of questions for you at the end, but by all means, interrupt us along the way if you've got comments and questions.
Great. So, good evening, all. Good to see you again. I know that you have met me once before when I was here presenting for the comprehensive plan. I figured, because this is our, our first official meeting on this project, it'd be good to have some formal introduction of who we are. Yeah, I'm David Fisk, associate with Leland Consulting Group. So we are also working on your comprehensive plan, on the economic development element as well as the housing element. So this, this work is certainly related to both of those as well, though this is a little more targeted and strategic and more short-term in terms of its planning horizon. So, we have, yeah, a brief presentation prepared for you. Want to get through it sort of in 15 minutes or so, so we can leave most of our time here for discussion, as was mentioned. So I'll hop right into it, and just for our agenda, I guess we sort of went through the introductions, but I'll give you a brief overview of what our schedule is for, for what this project is all about. Some key takeaways for some of the initial analysis that we have done and sort of review of some of your existing economic development goals and work that you've done recently, and sort of from our initial work, what we've sort of identified as strategic focus areas that we want to carry forward and get your feedback on as we move more towards developing specific strategies and actions for the city to take over the next five years. And then, yeah, the majority of what we want to spend our time on is this goal-setting exercise, where we've got some, some questions and prompts for you all and would like to have a good discussion with you to set us on the right track for the rest of the project. So with that, just an overview of sort of what the expectations are in our understanding and goals of this, this project. So again, really wanted to build on some of the previous work that you have done in recent years, the 2019 general plan update to the economic element, as well as the town center subarea plan, which sort of fed into that. And then I know there was a council goal-setting session in 2022. And so building off of that and carrying it forward into this strategic plan, and again, then aligning it with what's going on in your comp plan update and sort of how these shorter-term strategic actions can, can contribute to those longer-term goals and, and policy implementation steps that may integrate some of the work from this plan as well. And as is important for any strategic plan, economic development strategic plan, defining really what the city's role is and ability to contribute to an economic development is really important. So we'll talk a little bit about that today, and that's going to be sort of what this, this plan is all about, what the city can actually do in this regard. And another thing that we've been focused on is understanding what is needed to attract new grocery, a new grocery store, but also just more generally, commercial activity to the town center. A lot of work has gone into and continues to go into the town centers. So how can we bring commercial activity to this area that we're sitting in right now? And of course, understanding major employment drivers, opportunities for growth that come with that, and the crux of any strategic plan, clearly define strategic actions that we'll be laying out, or sort of short, medium, long term. And again, this is for a five-year planning horizon, so that's sort of what we're, we're focused on. We're not going to be drilling down into those, those strategies today, but we want to get sort of a high-level guidance and for us to carry forward that we'll then be bringing back to you later on in the process to dig more deeply into those strategic recommendations and further define them together with you all. So just very briefly, looking at the, the timeline here, so sort of looking at the bottom line there really, we're, we're at the end of our project initiation and data gathering phase here. We've wrapped up our initial demographic and economic profile, which I believe was shared with you all, if you had a chance to, to read it. Won't be sort of diving into a lot of that deep analysis. We don't have time for that tonight, but that is sort of baked into some of our, our discussion today. And we've had some stakeholder involvement that has already transpired, mostly interviews, stakeholder interviews and, and focus groups with some of your regional partners and local business groups. And we'll be continuing some of that going forward. But now we're really, again, diving into the strategy development phase of the work. So, that of the way, just sort of a brief overview of economic development, sort of the way that, you know, we're thinking about it, or I guess I should say, when most people think of economic development, I think they think of, you know, employment and jobs, business. There's a lot more to it that goes into it than that, but within that realm, it's also important to sort of differentiate the, you know, different areas of, of business or types of jobs that are often, that you're looking to create. And so typical way of, of thinking about that, there's your traded sector jobs, and so those are your, your employers that produce good services for export. Primera being the prime example here in, in Mount Lake Terrace makes up close to one-third of, of your overall employment. But then there's also your local sector businesses, so your Double D Meat and your Hemlock Brewing Company, companies that are mostly serving their local community and often held near and dear. And so we're, when we're talking about business attraction and, and job growth and economic development more generally, it's important to sort of differentiate these two in when we're talking about strategies. And then again, what, what is the city's role in economic development? So there's a lot that goes into that, but really, the city doesn't control everything that goes into economic growth. You know, there's a lot of regional momentum that sort of affects a city, the market as well, but there are specific actions that cities can take, placemaking, investments into infrastructure, support for your small businesses and local businesses, and partnerships is a really big part of it. And so these, these groups on the right here, your regional partners, that'll be really important and play an important role in helping you execute the, the strategies and implementation steps that are defined in this, this plan. So with that, just want to hop into sort of high-level overview of some of the takeaways that we have that have been then distilled into three strategic focus areas for us to discuss tonight. At a, at a high level, sort of the analysis that we've done and looking through some of your past work, again, looking at some of the major opportunities, there's a lot of, of growth and really demographic shifts, excuse me, that I'm sure you're all aware of, that really presents a lot of opportunity when it comes to, to economic growth, especially related to, to retail, and a lot of opportunities in seeing these, these shifts that are happening in your community that can drive some of that, that retail demand, as well as regional industries that are growing and sort of, there are a number that maybe are more suited to Mount Lake Terrace, and we'll talk about that in, in just a moment. But also challenges, economic disparities, especially related to housing and housing affordability, which plays a big role in, in economic development and workforce development, the lack of developable land, which means not all sorts of employment uses may be viable. And just generally, you know, we already mentioned Primera, having a rather undiversified employment base, and where that base is, is in a rather slow-growing industry, so something to keep in mind and, and work to overcome. And in distilling this down to these three strategic areas, as we've sort of looking at economic diversification, again, sort of not keeping all your eggs in one basket and how, how the city can, can take actions to, to do that. Support for your local businesses, we've heard loud and clear about the, the desire for more and, and better local business. And town center placemaking, which I'll spend a bit of time sort of fleshing out what we mean when we say placemaking, and that there's a lot that goes into that and really being a catalyst to, to support all of, of your economic development potential. So for each of these, sort of laying out on the left here, related to the past work that you've done, there's a lot of focus, and we talked about economic diversification, trying to bring in more employment around a marketing that's been identified in past work. The city can, should be out there marketing itself to, to try and bring in new business. We know, and we've heard and we've talked with, with members of the community and regional economic development groups, Mount Lake Terrace is not an economic hub. I already talked about the land constraints that are here, but there are opportunities. And as was identified in some of your past work, looking into medical, health-related industries, clean technology, and I think that is still, you know, relevant today. And that's where a lot of, I think, this plan is, is trying to, to look at some of this recent work that's been done and make sure, is this still relevant? Where maybe we need to, to adjust going forward? I mean, in this case, I think out of these sort of regionally growing industries, there is still opportunity in these life sciences, medical device manufacturing, which I'll, I'll touch on a bit more in just a moment. So we look at the, the regional industries that are growing. This is sort of the list that's been identified within the region. And again, you look on the, the list on the right there, and a lot of those are, are not really viable within Mount Lake Terrace. We talk about aerospace, information, communication technology potentially, maritime, military and defense, transportation logistics, business services. But there were, there is opportunity, we feel, in life sciences, global health, clean technology. And the reason for that is that we've seen nearby, as you're probably all aware, there's been growth in these, these industries. Businesses have been moving into Lower Snohomish County within these industries right around you. You see here, over the last 20 years, these yellow smudges on the map sort of represent growth in those related tech, or sectors. And you can see Bothell just next door, as well as in Linwood, we've seen growth in these areas, not so much in Mount Lake Terrace, but that is where we feel there is, there is opportunity if we're going to be targeting or looking into growth in these regional growth sectors. And so then laying out some of the, the high-level potential strategies that we're carrying forward, some from your past work, but just more generally, continuing to develop and implement that marketing strategy, being strategic about it and really looking to develop a regional brand for Mount Lake Terrace will be important in this case. Collaborating with your regional partners to identify these targeted industries and clusters. Housing production, we've heard, you know, the lack of housing, the lack of affordable housing, the lack of the types of housing that, that workforce is looking for, plays a really big role in, in, in economic development, but also in where employers may locate, because it's, it's really difficult to find employees if there's not a place for them to live. And looking also if, if there's a need for further economic development staff on the city to execute all of these, all of these actions that we're identifying through this, this process. So moving on to the second focus area, supporting for local businesses. So if you look at our, your past work that's been done, past goals, a lot of focus on incentives for local business, ways to improve and expand upon local businesses or attract more, encouraging new business within specific areas, small specialty retailers, mercantile, basically things that don't exist today in the city. And we've, we've heard loud and clear from members of the community as well that there is a desire, obviously, for more small and medium local businesses, as well as, as grocery stores that are, are missing now and not the hub of your community. But there really is sort of a chicken and egg issue at hand, right, where people want these businesses, they want, they want to live near these types of businesses, but then those businesses won't necessarily be attracted to a place unless there are enough people there to support that business. And so really, at the end of the day, it comes down to rooftops bring, bring retail is sort of the, the standard, you know, mantra. And so as more people do move into the city, there really is going to be an opportunity for those businesses to follow, but what can the city do in the interim or to set themselves up for that success is, is an important part of this. And so just very briefly, looking at some of those, the population growth and demographic shifts that we talked about that are going to bring about potentially this, these new businesses, the trends are already showing that Mount Lake Terrace is, is growing, that expect, there is expected to grow considerably over the next 20 years. But not just that, but the demographic changes that we've already seen in the last decade plus, household size is, is going down, median household income is, is going up, diversity is increasing, level of education is increasing. And we're pointing these out just because these are the types of metrics that, that retailers especially typically look at, but just more generally, businesses are interested in seeing when, when deciding where to locate. And so sort of the trends are moving in a way that favors Mount Lake Terrace to be a destination for businesses going forward. And we also did do a fairly deep dive analysis into regional grocery. And what you'll see on the map on the right here is looking at trade areas of existing grocery stores that are around Mount Lake Terrace. And we also conducted a, a leakage analysis, which looks at, you know, how much of your spending is going outside of the city. And adding in your expected growth through 2035, we looked at what might the demand be for future retail and, and businesses coming in to Mount Lake Terrace. And there is certainly a possibility that an additional full-service grocery store might be in demand, but more than that, also quite a few numbers of, of restaurants, other types of specialty stores, health and personal care, clothing, et cetera. And so again, over the next five, 10 years, there is certainly going to be momentum and this, this increasing demand to drive more business growth into your city. And so what can the city do to, to encourage that? Continue to evaluate existing costs of opening a business here and locating, but also look at potential incentives to retain, expand, and attract your businesses, defining what types of businesses you're looking to attract a little bit more clearly, so that can be a part of that targeted marketing and outreach strategy. But also thinking about, could you be locate, or sorry, partnering with, with local entrepreneurial networks and be developing some sort of incubator programs within your town center and in the city to try and drive some of that local business growth? And I know you guys have recently sort of begun to revamp your relationship with the local chamber and try and build that up further, so continuing to do that and think about how you can strategically partner with them for, for events and, and networking. And so the last one here, want to make sure we get to our, our discussion, but so town center placemaking, and I want to emphasize, I think in our, our opinion and sort of looking at a lot of your past work and in our, our just analysis and, and experience, the potential for being successful and executing your sort of vision for the town center really can, can be a catalyst for a sort of success of all of these other elements that we're, we're touching on. A vibrant town center with public investment into it can unlock a lot of private investment and economic opportunity. But then also when we're thinking about how you program and, and sort of some of the, the placemaking or softer sides of creating an identity in your town center, being more concrete in what you're trying to accomplish and strategic is going to be really important in actually building that, that, that identity and that brand that will draw people into your town center. So there's been a lot of focus and a lot of the work in the, the regional, or the recent subarea planning is still very relevant in terms of focusing on arts and culture, promoting shopping and dining and entertainment, and linking it to your, your light rail station and other regional transit and pedestrian amenities through your, your park here in Veterans Memorial Park. And so when we think about placemaking, it really is, you know, the way that we practice it and think of it in our, our work is a very holistic way of, of focusing on creating a place that people want to live, work, and play. And it's, it's not just about programming and arts and culture, but there are harder sort of investments that the city, that are involved in the, the art of placemaking. And so why is this important? City investments can unlock that, and that private investment, as we mentioned, but it's also, you know, as was indicated, prior to the pandemic, there is a lot of demand for people to live in the types of places that have been envisioned in the town center. And a lot of recent research that's come out shows that there is still that, that demand. People still want to live in places with sidewalks and, and businesses to walk to. This is a, a study from the National Association of Realtors that just indicates that across all demog, all sort of age groups, this is still top of the list in terms of what people deem important when looking for a place to live. And so when we look at your, your town center subarea plan, continuing to implement that, which, you know, in speaking with you all, and as Jeff, you already indicated, that work is still, is, is underway, and you are actively still pursuing the implementation of this, and that is going to be vital to unlocking a lot of economic opportunity. But again, beyond just sort of, you know, public art, public gathering places, events and programming, which are very important, it's also ensuring that your urban design vision, the infrastructure improvements that you envision, do come to fruition, because that more sort of hard, permanent infrastructure side is a message to, to businesses, to other private investors, developers, that you guys are, are serious about making this happen. And so continuing to, to follow through with that plan is, is going to be vital. So there, and then when we do talk about sort of, I think, placemaking, when people think a little bit more, or when people think about placemaking, what they do think about is maybe some of these activities as well, some of the things you've already been doing around, around Lake Ballinger restoration, things like tactical placemaking, like allowing for temporary spaces to be activated that then could lead to more permanent investments in the future, continuing to activate your, your parks and other public gathering spaces, and also strategic placemaking, which is really thinking about how about how can you event or how can you create events and programs that are be targeted at bringing in certain types of people that you're interested in seeing in your town center. So this is also, again, maybe the softer side of placemaking that is important in this case, that goes along with the infrastructure improvements and other things we spoke of. And so just to conclude here, potential strategies for this, to continue to seek funding, which is underway for these public realm investments, continue to activate and enhance the town center with public events, and focusing on increasing activity, maybe in small targeted areas. And again, leading back to sort of some of the desire around grocery and just restaurants and places for people to gather, perhaps piloting some food-related programs that can draw people into the town center, that can continue to build momentum towards some of that maybe more permanent, long-term activity. So that's the conclusion of their presentation, to sort of set up our goal-setting exercise. So we'll have opportunity to discuss through our questions, but maybe we want to pause there briefly if you have any questions for us before hopping into the goal-setting piece.
Councilmember Salmore.
So when we started this in late 2006, 2007, the landscape has changed in the plans of the way the city is building and growing. So I'd like to talk about how things are changing downtown from the vision that we originally put into place, because now, I think, within the next three to four years, we'll have over 2,000 apartments going in, I believe. I'm not even sure if, there's 350 over there. I can't remember the total number, but it's a lot. And so that's going to change the landscape of the whole downtown. And we've seen in other places, if you go back east, if you go into certain places, when you have a whole bunch of apartments, it changes the dynamics of, you know, residents, I was going to say volunteering, but there's a whole scheme, you know, that goes along with apartments coming in and squeezing people together. And so my big thing is crime always goes up, and so that creates a different atmosphere downtown. And we've seen that, there's proof on when you squeeze a lot of people into a small area, things happen. And I recently did a study with Korea and how they're building up, and they're building big, tall, like condo issues, and it's changed some of the landscaping. But I think our downtown, the way that maybe my generation sees it is a lot different than the current generation that's coming up. So we have the issue with parking, we have the issue with, you know, ordering, Amazon, you know, delivering packages. We've gone through the whole thing, looking at wedding cake designs. We've looked at all sorts of different things and all different things, but we haven't really addressed it in this plan yet, and I'm hoping that's what you're going to do, is how are we going to cater to the people that live in the apartments? And how are we going to look at how that changes dynamics? Because we're talking about putting a lot of different things in place, but where are those going to go unless you kick people out of their homes or you buy up their land? And so one of the things I always believe in, if you're voted into the office, you're supposed to be loyal to the people who live here and trying to make the best of their life and live, work, and play in the community. So I kind of would like to maybe draw upon that and understand how that will change the dynamics of some of the plans that we've had in place for years and how it's going to change.
Yep. Thank you. That's all very good things to keep in mind, I think. So then when we talk about parking, maybe considering strategies around shared parking, ways that we can reduce that and make sure that it does not lead to further congestion. And, you know, I think one of the things that's invaluable at these discussions is to make sure that we are focused on what your future economic vision is, is sort of meeting the desires of your existing community as well. And so, you know, we hope that we've captured some of that and will capture that, but need to continue to check that with you all as we get further along in the process.
Yeah, and I think I would add that we've heard in a lot of our outreach, there's from the existing current residents, kind of a mourning of the loss of some of the vitality that downtown used to have, some of the grocery stores, some of the other stores and shops that you used to be able to walk to that are no longer here. And the volume of housing that is going to be coming is also an opportunity, because that's going to drive those rooftops, it's going to make retail coming back into the town center viable, which in today's market, it's not, otherwise they would be here. And that's part of the, that's part of the strategy, is figuring out what's it take to make the retail viable in the town center so that it can serve both the newcomers and longstanding residents.
Thank you. Thank you so much. How retail will change in the future, because the way I see it is, I know you have clothing store and furniture store, which I would love, but I think in the future, people are getting their furniture through the mail or their, so are we looking at, I'm sure, the dynamics of what's going to be changing? So we're thinking about that far out, because I don't know what that is, so I'm looking for you guys to tell me.
Oh, I hope you weren't going to ask us that. No, I mean, you're right, retail is probably the fastest-changing land use that's out there, and it's evolving so fast that we really don't know what the future holds. But what we do know is that because there is so much growth coming, if growth were flat, we would probably say you're going to have some contraction happening because more and more is going to happen online. But that's being more than offset by the amount of growth that's coming into the region. And, yeah, you know, I don't know if you'll see three auto parts stores, for example, you know, coming into the city, certainly not into the town center. And so some of those categories are sort of artificially segmented, but I think the main message is that there's so much growth coming that there, no matter what, there will be, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And then to the extent that we talk about planning where and how. Absolutely, yes.
A follow-up question to that. Should we also be looking at our zoning then to maybe if we're going to have all these apartments and they just keep on coming and coming, it might drive not having any retail? And so what I'm afraid of is that we're going to just be one big old, you know, apartment. It's not that, you know, it's just going to be everywhere and we won't have any land to do anything else with bigger things. And so is that something you're going to be addressing as well?
Yeah, I mean, maybe not so much in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, but through the comprehensive planning process and your existing town center subarea plan definitely addresses things like mixed uses. The, that's where design really becomes important. Retail doesn't work everywhere, it works in, you know, certain visible locations that are accessible, but it also gets down into really nitty-gritty details, like where do the trucks back up to take away the garbage or load and storage? And how do customers park? Because not everybody's going to be able to walk to the store. So all of those things definitely need to be a part of the conversation.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for being here and interested and excited to dive into our conversation. I did have a quick question, though, before we did. So when we're talking about economic diversification, curious about the, I guess, the thoughts from your lens about the growing number of folks who are working at least part-time, you know, from home, and like, and how we as a city can support and capture, you know, I think, benefit from that?
Yeah, great question. I mean, we're talking about the changing landscape of retail or office is, has changed even more rapidly over the last few years. We were just talking about this actually earlier today, there's some recent studies that come out and sort of looking at how many people are actually going back to the office and how many people are staying at home. And it's, you know, the numbers aren't exact, but on any given day, it's probably likely that about half of your residents that work in an office job are working from home, give or take. And so, especially if we're talking about the town center or just having more people to support local business, that is a boon for that. Because if you're having even more people living in apartments in your town center, half of those people are going to possibly walk out to go get lunch or go to a coffee shop. And so it's an even increased density of the potential activity to support your businesses.
Thank you for that. And since you mentioned density, I was going to save it till we got to the strategic conversation. But I will just name, I think, some of our opportunity is naming that we are already an incredibly dense community. I think we're in the top 10 in the state, and I think sometimes there is just a, I think, gap in our public perception, even within our own community and within our own, I think, staff and council, what we already bring to the table when it comes to what opportunities businesses have here in Mount Lake Terrace. So I guess I just want to make sure that that is part of the lens that we are having this conversation through, is yes, we are going to get more dense, and we are already incredibly dense.
Absolutely. I think we'll probably get to it later in the conversation, but I think when we talk about marketing and branding of, I think there's, I don't think it would be offensive to say, but like, Mount Lake Terrace doesn't really have a brand. People don't really know what it is or who it is. In the same way that, you know, Bothell or Kirkland or Bellevue, people know exactly what you're talking about when you mention those cities. So I think that's the work yet to come.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thanks, Mayor, and really appreciate the presentation and this conversation. Sorry, I can't be there with you, but, you know, I was, I think Councilmember Murray captured my first question, and I think the work from home question is something that I think is really interesting to consider, but also as we're, you know, looking at that, I think we also, you know, I sit on some housing-focused regional boards and in a recent meeting, heard some interesting statistics about where staff had crunched some numbers about how far people drive for, you know, service jobs. And, you know, because housing is so expensive, you know, I'm wondering, you know, one, if you can sort of speak to the value and benefits of sort of having, you know, creating opportunities here close to home for folks in Mount Lake Terrace or within the sort of more adjacent North King, South Stonish County area. And then also, I'm wondering, you know, because I didn't see it called out really distinctly in the conversation or in this presentation, is, you know, how, or have you done any thinking or do you have any advice for us as council and as a city around the opportunities in our sort of 220th area, 220th to 212th sort of northwestern quadrant, where we have a lot of sort of light industry, you know, shipping and, you know, other sort of commercial businesses there that I think really are, you know, especially as we get more deliveries, but also as, you know, recognizing that light manufacturing and other sort of non-retail, non sort of brick and mortar retail jobs do exist there. And if there are opportunities to sort of modify our land use there or to, you know, work with business in that space, because I, you know, biomed, biotech, and all of that stuff, I think, you know, I'm really interested in seeing how we can draw in those sort of higher-paying, you know, sort of sexier, if you will, you know, employers in Mount Lake Terrace, certainly any of those types would be a boon. But also thinking about the opportunity to make sure that we're employing folks who do, you know, that, all these other sort of job types that I've sort of mentioned. So I think you, there's a number of questions baked into that rambling, but we'd love your thoughts.
Yeah, a number of questions to sort of dig into there, and I think, well, maybe the last one, Councilmember, that you asked, I think that area in the northwest of the city, Melody Hill, if I'm not mistaken, right, is the only area in the city that has light industrial zoning. It's where you're seeing, yeah, those types of employers. And I think, yes, that is sort of the natural fit if you're going to be sort of trying to attract some of these regional growth industries into that makes sense and essentially working with, you know, regional brokers that are working in those, with those types of businesses, to think about how they could look to position themselves here in Mount Lake Terrace. And that's certainly something we'll be exploring more and sort of looking into or deliberate actions the city can take through partnerships to perhaps bring that about. The issue of commuting and service jobs and people that don't necessarily have access to homes close to their job, that's, it's a regional issue that everyone is combating, and, you know, that's a big reason why transit-oriented development, the opening of the light rail is meant to hopefully make a large impact in that regard, or at least opening up more opportunities for people in terms of transportation and access to jobs and housing. And so to say that Mount Lake Terrace is going to be able to sort of fix that problem on their own is probably disingenuous, but contributing to that, and again, by locating more housing close to not just light rail, but the other expanding transit opportunities that are coming into the region, I think is going to play a very big part in that. I don't know if you have something to add to that.
Well, not so much on that, but back to the Melody Hill conversation. There's a lot of linkages between this work effort on the Economic Development Strategic Plan and the comprehensive planning. And if I recall correctly, Melody Hill is a subarea that will be addressed specifically through the comprehensive planning process. And so the conversations we have here and that emerge through this economic development work will directly feed into that portion of the comp plan work.
Because I know our time is limited, actually, I think we're already starting to dig into some of the questions and sort of vision and goal-setting here. Should we move on to the next slide, which has just a prompted question to maybe get some more conversation going?
Do you have questions?
Question?
Not yet.
A few comments.
Well, we'd love to hear your comments and questions, but maybe in the context of this question, and then we can continue to discuss. So just to get a little further feedback on sort of what we presented with you today and sort of as an organizing framework going forward, do you agree that these strategic focus areas are hitting the mark? Is there anything that's missing or that you would prioritize or that is unclear, I guess?
Are you asking us?
Yes, yes.
Does anybody have anything? Maybe this is where you come in, or are you going to wait?
I suppose. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Yeah, first of all, thank you for all the work that you've been doing and are going to be doing. I think, you know, as many of you know, economic development has been near and dear to my heart for many years. I think you've done a great job of capturing, you know, a lot of the thoughts and ideas that I've thrown out for 10 years now. And I'm really excited about the direction we're going and what we're doing and what the potential opportunities are for us to really create a thriving community with expanded job opportunities and places for people to live, work, and play. And so I do have some thoughts and ideas I'd love to share as we go along. I know there's a couple in the next slides, I was going to be focusing on a couple of different areas. I guess as far as answering this question, are these the right priorities? Yes, I think they are. I'm assuming the economic diversification, particularly as I look at, you know, what you've been explaining and some of the questions coming up, is really about retention and expansion and identifying what new businesses we want to attract, need to attract, what the desires are of the community, such as grocery stores and other retail shopping opportunities, as well as what potential, what the potential for what's likely to or needed to expand here or attract to here to Mount Lake Terrace. So I'm assuming that that's what economic diversification is really capturing. When you say, use that term, we're just, we're talking about retention and expansion and creating new opportunities for the types of businesses we want to attract to Mount Lake Terrace. So if that's, assuming that's the case, I think we're absolutely on the right track for, and then. and then supporting local businesses and town center placemaking and creating more and better opportunities to get, attract businesses to the town center and to our communities is exactly what we need to be doing. So thank you.
Okay, maybe we can go on to the next slide. Oh, did you have a question?
Sorry, I had a level set on exactly what you meant by all three, so I had to go back and understand. So economic, the first one on marketing, regional plan, collaboration. The only thing we didn't address is economic staff. And then with local businesses, the cost incentives, we're doing incentives already and different things. And then town center was the live, work, and play. What are our other options? I mean, so, you know, we've kind of heard those. Are you suggesting there's something else, or we're going to just focus on these?
Good question. We were saying you should focus on these. Yes. And I think, I mean, there's, I think, I guess I would say, you know, focus, you know, we've identified those as focuses and priorities because you want to, you know, bite off what you can chew and be most effective at. And we want to be respectful for, and kind of one of my questions, but we want to be respectful for what's the city's role in economic development? What is its capacity to do it? So whether that's staffing, whether it's implementing its own programs or partnering with partners to implement those programs that benefit the city, but the city doesn't have to do it itself, is kind of helping us get a, one of our questions to you, I think, has helped getting a lay of, you know, what's this, how deep are the city's desires to be a kind of an implementer unto itself and staff up and provide, you know, incentives and direct projects versus, you know, maybe the more passive side of, you know, create policies and zoning and things that kind of open up opportunity but rely on partners in the market to deliver? It's kind of a leading question, but.
Yeah, well, sorry. It was like, okay, you answer it. You did a good job.
So I think the next couple of slides are just going through each of these three and seeing if there's more nuance to sort of dig into or things that you would prioritize. So I think, Mayor Potem, you began to sort of discuss this one. Do others have thoughts around this goal of economic diversification, attracting and expanding and retaining businesses to build your employment base? So these are sort of some of the strategies that we've outlined, the things that you'd like to dig into further or feel like are missing here.
Yeah, and I think I'll add that, like David said at the introduction, we're just talking high-level goals. Like, are we pointed in the right direction? We'll be coming back to you later with the, okay, if, what are the things that the city should do? What will go into your action plan, your implementation plan? We'll be coming back to you later towards the latter part of our project with those kinds of recommendations. But it would be good to be thinking as you talk tonight, are these the kinds of goals that we would sort of put our money where our mouth is and put our staff resources, put our financial resources, put our physical capital projects towards these goals? Because if the answer is yes, then those are the kinds of recommendations that we'll come back to you with.
Oh, go ahead, Aunt Mayor Potem.
Trying to patiently wait and see if others had comments before I launch into this. So, yes, and so in looking at the, what you've laid out here, to me, I kind of put the workforce development into the next category, the support for local businesses. And I'm going to get to that when we get to that slide. And in many ways, I think business attraction in targeted areas is very much tied to and linked to marketing and branding strategy. I think that's one of the, you know, absolutely one of the things that we're, we need to do much, much more of. But I guess kind of expanding on the business attraction and targeted industries or just our economic development program in general. And I guess I wasn't sure if I should talk about this during this slide or the previous slide. Because in general, I think one of the things we want to, because it's not really so much goal-setting as it is, what we, some of what we want to get out of this, I mean, we want to identify, and we kind of hit on some of these things, for instance, staffing. And, but, and then, you know, do we need a specific staff member to implement these programs? Or can we create a, and/or can we be creating, within our own personnel, creating a cultural mindset of open, we're open for business? And how do we go about doing that so that we're all in this team, you know, on this team, working together, whether we're in parks or Parks and Recreation Program, or our police, or our planning department? Everybody is working to achieve the same goal. Because ultimately, if we're successful, when we're successful, we'll see more revenues, be able to support all of our other programs. And so creating, ensuring that all of our staff understands that and will be successful with their individual programs and departments is going to help us be better set to achieve our goals initially, to be able to help everybody in the long run. But also just identifying what kind of policies do we need to be putting in place? We talked about, you know, zoning and the regulatory environment. And what kind of, are there any policy changes we need to make to better set the stage for attracting the type of development we want? What kind of processes do we need to change? I mean, reviewing our permitting process and things like that. And are there, is there room for improving the process that we have in place? Are there other programs? We've talked, we've hit on the infrastructure. What type of investments do we need to make in our infrastructure or other programs to help create and improve the opportunities or potential opportunities for attracting the type of business we want to bring to Mount Lake Terrace? And then workforce housing, I'm not sure how much of that is, we started out by saying, I absolutely agree, it's about rooftops, right? So we absolutely need to be addressing housing and workforce housing, how much of that is, should be addressed through our economic development strategy versus our comprehensive plan and tying it together, I'm not sure. But yes, but I think the focus should be more on the business attraction and what kind of policy do we need to put in place or programs, et cetera? Investments do we need to make to attract the business we want?
Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm back on slide 12, which is the economic diversification and its life science and global health and clean technology. Maybe it's just the pictures are throwing me off, but I just feel like you gave up on us. I'm sorry to say it that way. I should back up and say thank you for the work you've all done. I've been with you for a while. I think you're doing great. But it's just, I look at this and I go, so all these other areas are off the table, and we have what to me feels like a South Everett opportunity here. Warehouses, big open spaces, big parking lots so the trucks can turn around. And I'm just thinking to myself, we don't even have this zoned for some of this. So maybe the life sciences, because they appear to be perhaps working in pods, so they're office buildings now. And I go, is that what we want, office buildings? And again, I just go, really, none of these other ones? That's really all I have to add at this point, where I think I just, you lost me there. And I realize we've got a long time together, so I'm not too worried about it. But I'm still stuck here going, at the end of the day, you're telling me these are the areas that Mike might consider Mount Lake Terrace. And I got a light rail station out there. I've got a beautiful park system. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, where I'm just thinking to myself, I can't even appeal to these folks to tell them to move here. I'm just thinking out loud, but I'm like, that doesn't give me my economic development, does it? Yeah, you would think I would, right? But again, it's not even on the list. It's not a moneymaker, right? So yes, and I know that's not on here, it's not a moneymaker. But I guess I'm just thinking, is there nothing else? This is it? And that's no intentional denigration to the life science. My spouse is in life science, and clearly, clean technology is needed. But I just think to myself, maybe I just don't see how we really fit because this is showing me the nuts and bolts instead of showing me other pieces of that puzzle. But again, I just probably should leave it at the, I just feel short-changed. My city is way more significant than this. Again, intentionally denigrating the two who present themselves. Please do move here, but I just feel like there's some other room here for other folks, so.
Great. Now, we actually, we appreciate that. That's, you know, if you want more, then, you know, then that's a good goal to set, and we can work on strategies to grow more. I think probably our thinking on the limiting here is more about your land availability and that you don't actually have a lot of land for large users. But some of those industries can fit into lots of different types of buildings and spaces depending on, you know, where they are in the vertical chain of each industry. So, yeah, so we definitely hear you on that and can think about, you know, ways where we can, I think broadly, and then go from there.
So even though, let me get my thoughts together here. Those businesses that we're, that you were, had on there that would like, we would like to attract here, I'm really hoping that not all the buildings in town center is going to be housing. Because at least one of them, hopefully, will be an office building. And why an office building when everything's closing down in Seattle? We're a smaller office building, and we're a different community. We're going to be right on light rail outside of the city. And I'm, because that's what we were talking about in the very, very beginning when we started this, is that before COVID, a lot of the people who have large offices in downtown Seattle wanted to have a satellite in either Linwood or Mount Lake Terrace. And maybe now they don't even need this out. The big one down in Seattle, they can just be in Mount Lake Terrace or Linwood. The rents will be less. It'll be a brand-new building. And they don't need as much space because half of their workforce is out working from home. So I'm just hoping that one or maybe more of the buildings will be office spaces because we're going to be needing people who are going to be working here so that when we have the restaurants coming, that they will have their lunches here and so forth. I also would like to see something to do with performing arts because that is a destination. And if they're going to come here for our restaurant, they might as well stay and see a play or a movie or whatever. And I'm thinking about 12th Avenue Arts in Seattle on Capitol Hill, where is an old parking, parking space, parking lot for the Seattle Police. And the Seattle Police still have their parking lot underneath. But then you have all that restaurant in front and then two performing arts and then a whole stack of low-income housing. And I just think that that is amazing that Seattle got that together, and I would like to see something like that here. But, but it's also, you know, we don't have a police parking lot that we can convert into airspace. But again, I'm looking for destination type of, because at night, the shared parking, the office people will go home, and then they can, the nighttime crowd can use that same parking space. Just my two cents.
Appreciate that. I think the, when we say diversification, I think all of those uses, the arts and culture and office and retail, that's all part of diversification. And even, and I think it's important, going to be important through the zoning and through the policies, that there's lots of flexibility built into whatever we do because soon as the ink is dry, something's going to be out of date, something's going to, a new invention, another pandemic, who knows what's going to happen? And the city will want to be nimble and able to adapt. And then I think the work from home conversation is really relevant because even if you don't get an office building in the town center, those 200 units of apartment, I can't remember. We did a study for Linwood just last year. And based on the research at the time and the percentage of people that are working from home, most, you know, three or four days a week, that like a 200 or 300-unit apartment building actually has more daytime workers in it than a surface-parked suburban office park. Even though it's an apartment building, it actually has more office workers in it than a traditional office park. And you're going to see that here, down at the station and with apartments that are built here in the town center. Even if it's not your traditional, it'd be great to have the headquarters or the corporate presence too. But even without it, you're going to have the employees, whether you build an office building for them or not.
Well, that's why a restaurant moved into our terrace station because they just looked up and saw all those people, all those apartments. And it was a built-in customer base for them. Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, all of our council. I appreciate the conversation. I would echo, I think, what Mayor Potem, while kind of how he outlined it. I think for me, the marketing and branding strategy is key. I think to your comment that you already made, I don't know that we have a clear, shared identity of who we are when we go out to market. And I think if we don't know, it's really hard for us to communicate that to others. I think to Councilmember Woodard's point, there is so much opportunity here in Mount Lake Terrace, and I don't know that we have figured out exactly how to communicate what that opportunity is. And would love to get to a point where we have shared understanding of that and clarity and can really go and talk about it in a unified way. So I think that is, that is critical to all of the other stuff. I think the only other thing I didn't see on here that I think might be helpful, I think one of the things I've heard from businesses who actually do know about Mount Lake Terrace and are interested in coming here is that there's no place for them to go. And actually, I've heard that both from folks who are not currently in Mount Lake Terrace as well as from folks who are in Mount Lake Terrace and who would like to stay in Mount Lake Terrace and would like to find different space to do so. So I think that is both a economic diversification as well as supporting our current local small businesses. We don't have a ton of spaces right now for businesses to either move into or to grow into. And so I think that's got to be an important part of our planning as we look at diversification.
Mayor, if I might, I apologize. I know that this is an important topic for all of you, but this is item number four of 12 on the agenda for this evening. Next time we bring this to council, we'll make sure to have it as a standalone.
Yeah, I'm just going to actually.
Okay, Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did notice, one of the, one of the items on the agenda is to review the next meeting's agenda, which I noticed was very light. Are there any items on the agenda tonight that we can move to next week?
So we can take a look at that while you continue your discussion. One of the things that we wanted to make sure that we did was continue with the work session, regular business meeting concept. But we've moved things around previously and held public hearings on work session evenings. So we can take a look at that while you continue.
Recognizing that we have. Not here just for this conversation.
I mean, I know our conversation has sort of been circling around all of these topics. Do we want to move on just to focus on this area here in terms of local businesses? Or, Mayor Potem, do you have something else to add?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
May, yeah, I am ready to move on. I did want to just touch on the branding and marketing and note that it's not just the message. I mean, so part of it is the branding and creating the message, but it's also identifying those, the audiences, which of course gets back to, you know, who do we want to attract? And then, and then our tactics for how do we reach out to them? So it's not just a mass, you know, it's not just a mass marketing campaign, but it's identifying a specific approach for how do we specifically reach out to those businesses, that, you know, the investors, the potential businesses that we want here? You know, is it through media? Is it through a staff person dedicated to going out and touching them and letting them know we're here and informing them, et cetera? So just kind of putting some more clarity on how we're going to do, deliver our branded message.
Okay, anyone else? Well, Jeff just left. Yeah.
Any other comments just in general, I mean, related? Any, any other comments just in general, I mean, related? Oh, Councilmember Donovan.
Oh, Councilmember.
Sorry, maybe it's not on me to call.
Right, out of sight, out of mind. I appreciate Councilmember Wall's comments here, just to take that thread a little bit further. Also curious about, give any recommendations, just, you know, with the thing of the grocery store example, but I think it could apply to, to any, you know, potential, you know, new, new business that we, we hopefully, you know, welcome into our town the next few years, you know? As we, as we update our comp plan, you know, want to make sure that we're, we're, you know, we have the, the land use and, and the other sort of policy knobs, you know, turned in, in the right way to make sure that, say, if, if a grocery were to try to sit in, in town center, that there wouldn't be any hurdles in the way. And, you know, I think that, you know, our, our willingness to sort of engage interested businesses that, 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 you know, we might in, you know, market to, or, or, you know, entice, once they're, they're aware of the opportunity to, to come into town. Again, I, I think, you know, that, you know, whether it's through staff or sort of other, other opportunities for, for engagement, I'm, I'm interested in, in the opportunity, very interested in your thoughts about, you know, how we, how we, you know, do that, that correctly, or in, in a, in a responsible way, I think. You know, I, I'm in favor of, of sort of the marketing approach, but also want to make sure that we're, we're doing that in a responsible way, you know, as, you know, to honor the, the businesses we have in town, but also sort of, you know, but, you know, be able to, to quickly put out a, a welcome mat should, should there be a, an opportunity. I'll, I'll stop there, but love you, love your thoughts.
Okay. Anyone else? That you're, you're going to come back with, and, and give us a, a update later, right?
Yeah, so I can outline just very briefly, in terms of next steps. So we will be finalizing sort of some of the vision and goals, some of the statements we've made here, just in terms of wrapping up basically what we've heard from you all today and sharing that, not finalizing and saying this is going to be the, the, the last piece of the, that'll go into the plan, but just to share with what, basically what we've heard and conclude from the, the feedback we've heard from you today. And then we will continue to be engaging with a number of stakeholders, we've talked about trying to repeat a, a similar type of developers forum, or bringing together some of the, the mix of people that might be involved in bringing business to your town center, for example, similar to what happened in your previous town center plan, as well as some engagement with the local chamber. So that's going to be ongoing over the next month or two, and then as we're sort of developing more concrete strategies based on these, these buckets basically we've been discussing with you today, I think we'll be coming back to you later in the spring to, with some, with these draft strategies and plan to, to really workshop them more, more thoroughly and in detail, dig into our strategic recommendations and, and work towards them, that final plan.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, can I ask a clarifying question? Are we, we talked about the first goal, and then we skipped the next two, and I will just name that I am a proponent of, I think the upfront work is the most critical piece in any project, right? And so I guess I want to make sure that we are setting you up for success, I think we are all very vested in this, and we know that this is a critical and key component of what we need to do as a community in order to do the long list of things that we want to do for, for our residents. And so I guess I want to make sure that we are not setting you up to come back three or four months from now, and us to be in very different places where you have done a lot of detailed work about this strategy that we have not fully talked through. So I guess I'm just, and I recognize time is, is, you know, a component, I guess I'm just curious, maybe this is a Jeff question, like if we are not finishing this conversation now, I feel like we need to finish it sometime in the near term, where we can make sure that we are setting them up for success as we are going about this very, very important work.
So what you've seen tonight, I think, is most of the things that council's talked about previously, and we, what this is really for is to make sure that we're not missing anything. So if there's something that we have not, the collective we have not thought of to include on this plan, this is really a refinement of the direction we've been going the entire time, and what I've heard tonight in particular is that the most important component of that is the branding work, the branding and identity work, the branding strategy, really, to define who we are, is like they were saying earlier, when you say Bellevue, you know exactly what you're talking about. And we need to have that for our community in order to move forward. We have a lot of the plans ready to go that are in place, so if there's anything we've missed, I think that's the most important thing to get out of this evening.
I think that, that is, for me, was the most important part of that first goal. I mean, I will say, I think there's lots of important aspects of the supporting the local businesses and also the, the placemaking. I was going to say, I think I've talked about that in our last couple of meetings, and I, I was going to say, I think that is a critical component as well. So, I don't know, I guess I heard lots of things that I'm hopeful or helpful color for you as you are engaging in this work on behalf of our community, so I guess I'd like to see more conversation about it, and I'll just name that. I think cutting the conversation short tonight does not set, so, and I, maybe that's an offline conversation, maybe that's small groups and we can share with you outside of a council meeting, I, like, I don't know, but this does not feel like a finished conversation to set you up for success from my perspective.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I, again, want to thank you both and your teams for the, the amazing work you've all been doing. Again, I have the honor of seeing part of your team with the advisory group as well. That said, I'm glad we went back to this particular slide that's up now, and in the context of how we were just talking about branding and all that, so I just want to make sure I said this out loud, because it's my given, which is, I would trust that we're doing support business retention and expansion as a priority, but as we're doing that, we're also looking for best practices, if you will, that we can highlight, and this is where I kind of pause and I go, okay, what I have learned is all of the Zeke's Pizza people seem to know each other that own these things, I think that's really interesting, which is just my way of saying, so they must also say, hey, how's it like working in your city? Not that they want another Zeke's next door to them, but that they're the ones that are saying, what's it like to work in this city? What's it like to build in this city? What's it like to grow in this city? So to me, I just want to make sure that, that priority, looking at this particular one for the local businesses who are already here, we're doing that retention and expansion, but we're also recognizing the power that's there, and then capitalizing on that to figure out who we are. Yeah, that's probably enough.
Councilmember, Mayor Protamwall?
Thank you, Madam Mary, and yes, so, and I'll wrap up my comments for the next two slides here. So, starting with the local business, this is where I, as I mentioned earlier, I thi, this is where I would focus the, the workforce development and kind of providing the education and training, look, exploring incubator programs, look into or determine, or I, is there a need and how would we go about helping and supporting some, you know, small business consultants, training mentors, tech support programs, et cetera? And we talked about the online, everybody's moving to mail, and that's, that was, you know, we've been to, well, anyway, there's been countless seminars and discussions about, about how to go about doing that, but so that's where, you know, there's, we have a lot of small businesses that can no longer rely on a customer base coming to them in person, right? But they have no ability or knowledge or don't know how to get an online presence, so helping them create an online presence. Anyways, just, so that kind of support, creating temporary opportunities, looking at, you know, is there a, a vacant office building that can then be turned into an, an opportunity for small businesses or artists or whoever to come and sell their wares? So just, I'm just trying to remember the term that, you know, the, the Realtors used to have a, a grant for block, like, parties or areas that they could, you know, put on, you know, a, a weekend, block off a, an area for a weekend in a block and create, again, kind of, you know, a fun atmosphere, but also creating business opportunities, et cetera. So that, that's kind of where I was, the additional comments I wanted to share on the local businesses, and then, then on the town center placemaking, getting back to the entertainment, absolutely agree with the mayor on, on, on entertainment, creating a venue, a place where people want to come and, you know, work, and then eat, and then see a show. So creating entertainment opportunities and, and outdoor dining, I'd love to see us have out, more outdoor dining places where we can just go and sit in the sun and eat. Yeah, I know. And, and particularly around the park, you know, we've got this great, beautiful veterans' park setting that we're going to be developing around, so we should be creating opportunities for dining and entertainment around that park, and being able to look into the park while people are having a, a drink or having a meal, et cetera. Night markets. We've talked about that, but I think creating, you know, not only, you know, not food-related programming, but so, you know, we've talked of farmers' markets, but I'd love to see night markets. Then exploring the, is there an opportunity to create an arts and cultural district, cultural district? Looking at monthly or quarterly cultural events where we highlight a certain region or culture and have a, you know, food, song, dance, pictures, experiences, share what it's, what it is to be from a certain area and, or experience a certain area. And then food truck parks, I've never been a food truck fan until, I, you know, they've, having a park with a number of different food trucks that, you know, kind of allow opportunities for a little bit of everything. So, you know, I may not want Mexican food tonight, but who I'm with does. But they've got a great shrimp truck, might give you an idea of where I'm getting, where I saw the food truck park, a great, you know, shrimp or seafood or something like, in other words, just a variety of different food, so creating an area for food truck park where we can have a lot of different, a variety of food trucks come and serve the area. So those were, I think, my ideas or thoughts on the placemaking.
We're going to have to change our food truck rules.
Coordinates.
Yes. Anyway, I, I'd love to go on.
Absolutely. If you're, if you have rules that are restricting them, I'm like the world's biggest fan of food trucks as an economic development incubator, yeah.
And we only want shrimp trucks. It sounds kind of good.
Anyway, so, but, you know, I, so those are just some additional notes that I had made on, on each of those two slides that wanted to share, but I think you're doing a great job, really excited about the direction we're going, and, and looking forward to seeing more when we have an opportunity to talk more about economic development. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. So, don't, don't take this personally, but I feel like I, I've been talking about this for years, so you did say at the beginning you're looking at our old plans, right? Because a lot of times, you know, we, we just want to be, know that we've been heard in different things, so, you know, assembling a, a summary would be wonderful, and looking at our old, there, we had a marketing plan for a journal, and we had, we put marketing plans together already, but to me, sometimes you just need small wins, and I know, we, we want the pie in the sky type of thing, because we care about the community and we want a lot, but it would be really nice to look at those marketing plans and have our staff look at them and determine, you know, what's needed. And then when you're coming into downtown, it would be nice, and I know we're cleaning up the Red Onion area, and just to have it look a little bit better, and we're working on our potholes, but the one thing that would be really nice, and we keep on talking about it, and I actually have a girlfriend who keeps on saying, why isn't there a grocery store? And I said, well, what am I supposed to do? You know, go grab one and, and, you know, plead for them to come in? And she goes, well, this, it's the city's job to get a grocery store, and I'm like, it is? And so it's the perception of what we need, and I think just those small wins sometimes of getting, you know, the grocery store coming in, cleaning up the area, the city's already doing, and then just the only thing that's been added on is maybe we're putting too many apartments in, you know, and so if there could be something summarized from the past, sometimes maybe we won't take as long, but we also want to make sure that anybody who hasn't seen it maybe could see the list and see what's been discussed, because Steve had that great idea of making a list of different areas of what could come in, and it's just maybe the storming and norming is, you know, we haven't talked about it for a little bit, but we, we just get excited, and maybe that's why we talk about it for a while, you know, and then we keep on thinking of something else. But, you know, when you're building the plan, because I was looking at your net, you know, just some small wins right off the top, you know, we're always looking at the long term, and a lot of it depends on what money we get for the state and federal funding for rebuilding our roads and different things. So, you know, it's always kind of putting an eye on our expectations of what we can really get done in like the next four years or something, because it's not the city's fault we can't get a grocery store sometimes, you know, it's, or, you know, it's that perception that that's out there, but you know, those small wins would be very nice.
No, absolutely, and I think, I mean, hearing loud and clear, I think we can, we can maybe more tightly tie this to some of the past work, I, it's very clear how much work and thought there has been put into, and the town center plan, and just in general, sort of your, the economic priorities and, and growth of the city. I think that specifically focusing on the town center plan, it is, is a very well-thought-out plan, that there's a lot of good strategy in there that are still relevant today, and making, making sure maybe we're, we're still capturing those and communicating those, that this is still viable, we, we'll make sure to, to do that and, and pull that out. I think the, your, your point about the small wins, that's absolutely, and maybe we, we didn't, you know, explain very clearly today, that's, in a strategic plan like this, especially we're, we're just looking at a five-year sort of planning horizon, we're talking about, you know, the first year or two, that's exactly what, what the city needs to be focused on, and that's what we're going to try and hone in on together and, and recommend with you in our next steps. What are the, the things that really you need to be doing tomorrow that might not be that, that big grocery store, but will, will lead to building this, you know, ongoing momentum? So over, you know, one year, the next three years, five years, that's how we'll sort of be organizing our recommendations, we'll look forward to workshopping that more with you guys.
Councilmember Murray?
All right, I'm just going to get in a couple of my top really quick since everybody else is. Okay, a couple of things that are top of mind for me. So one, I think the busi, one, everything on your list is wonderful, thank you. I think the business retention expansion, one of the things I'd really like to see, and I've talked about, is the fact that much of that is county-based work, we are at the south side of our county, love to figure out how to tap in more to the mayor's comment about folks who may be wanting to move north and out of Seattle or King County, how we are making sure that we are connecting and, and making those opportunities available to them, because that is not a natural connection point, because we are in different counties. Love to see thoughts and, and some, you know, planning around how, how we do that. I think the entrepreneurship programs is, support programs is great, I think a lot of that, both for new businesses and for current businesses, is wayfinding. There's lots of programs and opportunities out there, but when you are in the depths of, you know, running your business day-to-day, like the time and energy it takes to find them and take advantage of them is really complicated, so I think anything we can do to make that process easier and help them access the resources that are already out there from other folks would be really, really great. It would really, I, I think the multimodal connections from the light rail is really, I think how we're going to get folks from light rail up the hill, candidly, like I think really thinking thoughtfully about that is, is incredibly important. And one other one is we were, but I don't, I think it's gone, so I will just say thank you, and I'm looking forward to continued conversation.
Okay. I don't see any other hands coming up.
I will.
Okay, one more.
The thought came back.
I remembered it, thank you. And the, I would just say, I think uniqueness is important, right? Like, I guess I don't want us to just, like, I would like, we are in a, we are surrounded by communities doing all sorts of really interesting things, I would like some of our interesting things to look a little different than, than what is all around us, so I would love that to be part of the exciting things we hear back on.
Well, I'll just wrap up by saying. Well, I'll just wrap up by saying thank you for, for the discussion. I know we went a little long. And, but this is, this is great. A lot of really good thoughts and, and feedback. And we will do our very best to, to capture all of that and, and bring it forward into the plan. And again, this is not, not going to be the last time we have a chance to discuss this and refine these strategies together further. So it's always great to, to engage with a group of, of council members and mayor that are, that are very focused and, and engaged in these types of, of efforts. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, you want three minutes or five minutes? We're gonna, we're gonna take a three-minute break. Okay, we're back. Excuse me. We're back. And next on our agenda is a review, recommendations from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee with Events Coordinator Andrew Applewick and Parks and, Rec and Parks Director Jeff Betts.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Council. My name is Andrew Applewood. I'm the Events Coordinator for the City of Mount Lake Terrace, presenting on behalf of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, a reference as LTAC later, with recommendations for the 2024 Grant Fund allocation. Later in this, you'll hear the term hotel motel tax, which is the legal terminology for the tax fund, just to make sure we are all on the same page for that. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee was appointed by Council in January 2023 to make recommendations on the allocation for the city hotel motel tax funds. Per state law, the committee is comprised of two representatives from businesses that required, are required to collect hotel motel tax, two people who are involved in activities that are authorized to be funded by this tax, and one elected official to serve as a chairperson for the committee. In 2022, we had two applicants, Friends of the Arts, who were requested and were allocated $10,000, and Tour de Terrace Organization that requested $15,000 and was allocated $15,000 to meet the total budgeted amount of $25,000. In 2023, Friends of the Arts was requested and was allocated $10,000. Tour de Terrace was requested and allocated $15,000 to meet the budgeted $25,000 amount. This year's application period opened on September 26, 2023. We received two applications for Lodging Tax Grant Fund before the deadline of November 14, 2023. Clarification by one of the applicants was requested, as well as filling an unexpected void on the LTAC, delaying our 45-day review period from opening. Both applications were forwarded to the Advisory Committee for review, for review upon revision. Two applicants for this year were the Friends of the Arts, submitted a $10,000 request to help fund marketing for the 44th Annual Arts of the Terrace Juryed Art Show, September 21 through 28, 2024. And Tour de Terrace Organization submitted a $15,000 request to help fund the Seafair sanctioned Tour de Terrace Summer Festival, July 19 through 21, 2024. LTAC met on January 10, 2024 to discuss the applications, criteria for selection, and recommendations. At that meeting, a second meeting was requested and scheduled for January 30, 2024. At this meeting, the final recommendations were agreed upon by the committee. LTAC's recommendations, the committee believes that both applicants met the criteria to generate overnight stays and create economic or community benefit. One key action item that was identified by the committee was to take a fresh look at the application and process to be sure we are as clear as possible moving forward for future applications. Ultimately, the LTAC's funding recommendations was to allocate the budgeted $25,000 as follows. Arts of the Terrace for the Terrace Art Show, $10,000, and the Tour de Terrace Organization for the Tour de Terrace Summer Festival, $15,000 to meet the $25,000 budgeted amount. Tonight's options for Council, Lodging Tax Grant Approval is scheduled for February 15 meeting, so recommendations are being proposed tonight. Under state law, the City Council may award only in the LTAC recommended amounts to all, some, or none of the applicants on the LTAC list. The City Council may not adjust funding amounts without submitting their request to LTAC. If Council desires to allocate any funds for any entity that is not listed on the LTAC list or change the recommended amounts, they must submit their request to LTAC for further recommendation. The agreements, once approved, the agreements for the grants will be explained. All expenses must be reimbursed with the Hotel Motel Tax Fund following the event and require final written report with receipts to be submitted on the conclusion of the event.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
If you have any questions or anything about it, I can answer those now.
Did, did we have a third?
We did not have a third applicant. We only had two applications this year.
All right. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, great job. And then, secondly, you're, along those lines, I just want to go through this every year, just because I can never remember. You have to be non-city to apply for this, correct? Like, so I'm thinking of, like, we now have the, the summer series, but that's the city, we're doing that. So it's not like we would apply for that, because we're doing that. So it's got to be in our budget already. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, why does no one else apply? It just seems like, I don't know, this seems like a question we should be asking. I mean, I, I love the folks who do apply, but I'm also trying to figure out, so what happens, say, in 10 years? And I don't know, is it the same too? Did anything happen? Again, I just, I don't even know how we advertise this, otherwise I'd see, what's that?
We had this conversation 10 years ago.
I know, that's what I'm saying. Like, and it just seems like, I don't know, it just seems like it's weird. Like, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity. Somebody could get creative and bring something new to the city, right? Doesn't have to be established. But again, I'm, I'm very happy to keep supporting these two awesome experiences, but I just, I just, this seems like a disconnect there that I can't figure out.
We, we did have other people apply, but it didn't have anything to do with Mount Lake Terrace. They're, they're, they're not, they weren't going to do anything in our city and they were not from our city. And then there, and I can't remember some of the other, Laura would remember, some of the other ones that, early on. But we used to have a lot of people apply.
And just to let you know, we talked about that at the committee, so thank you for bringing that up. I just didn't want to bring too much stuff up because, like you had mentioned, Andrew, the committee is going to look at the application, but it is a narrow scope. So you have to bring overnight stays because it's the hotel motel tax. And so it's very limited on who, but there are other people that are interested in applying next year. So we hope to do that. And we do advertise for it. And, and the committee is great. And, and they understand that as well, that we need other people. So we had somebody from the ice skating rink, we had a roller derby that was outside the city, but, and I think the school district one time asked for something. One time we had, I think the most was like eight applications.
And so, so just because I brought it up, thank you, appreciate that. And again, I, no critique, but let me use as an example, last week, we had this public, what the heck was it called? Public forum? Public hearing? Thank you. I knew there was a word in there, man, I've been up too long. Anyway, and, and came this wonderful support and the stuff that they named. And I think to myself, why don't they get creative and do something? I'm sure they would generate, you know, but again, that's what I'm saying. It's like, there's, they've been sitting right in front of us. How many of us passed that on the way here? And we had to learn about this because they wanted to finally expand. And again, that's neither here nor there, other than to say that there's got to be other folks out there. And I absolutely agree with you. You absolutely advertise it, we promote it, but I just can't figure out what's, what, what's, to me, I'd be like, this is an incubator opportunity, nothing else. Pitch the idea, we go, no, you go, well, I tried, right? You know, but at least give it a chance. And I guess that's where I get a little lost of like, what are we not marketing right here to make that happen, please?
So the city can request funds for anything that is bringing in overnight stays, or can allocate for capital projects that are qualified for it. It's all listed out in the requirements for it. We did take on the Third of July Family Celebration, which had previously applied for it, which brings overnight stays. Another challenge that people run into is our application is going to be at the end of the year. So if it's a first-time event that they haven't planned for yet or not aware that the funds are there, it will take them about a year to be able to put together a scope that is feasible for them to apply for, and to have some form of nonprofit ties to it outside of being a city-run event. They need to have some form of that to show that they're not just a for-profit organization claiming funds that are allocated for those groups.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Woodard, for asking the question. I guess one of the things that you said that I think maybe prompted some thought for me, I mean, I do think we market it and what we're doing, you know, has kind of gotten similar results, you know, for a number of years. I wonder if some sort of like info session or something that isn't just like a written, like, folks trying to navigate another government process that if you're not familiar with it can be challenging. I wonder if just like, hey, do you have, you know, are you a nonprofit in our community that is looking at, you know, planning events that might bring folks in overnight? Like, we have an opportunity and like, just like giving a quick, I don't think it has to be anything super complex, but like, giving them the opportunity to come and like, ask questions and learn more about what that process looks like, feels like maybe a good opportunity for some stakeholder engagement to maybe build, you know, whether it's next year or future years, build more interest in, in the future. So.
I definitely think that is beneficial. As I learn more about hotel motel tax and lodging grant funds and being able to answer more of those questions would be great. And as the Chamber of Commerce does come in, to be able to have them educated on it as well, as they're networking with different organizations. But right now, it's just, it is kind of where we are in the growing process. And these are two large events that are happening within our city limits. And as much as we want to expand, that these are the two that have applied and have the infrastructure already laid out to be able to apply in September, October, early November.
Okay, go ahead. And the last thing is, I'll just bring it up. We, we've said over the years that this is seed money. It wasn't supposed to be something that was always continuous. But it has been just because nobody else applies and they're good events. And so that's something that the committee is looking at. But now that I know you know about it, I have a feeling there might be more people applying for it. So, so it's all good.
Will we all always be at 25,000 or can we change that?
We can, yeah. We can change that. But my thing is, if you want something like a stage or something in the park, why aren't, why don't we save some of that money to get something built or added on to or something? It depends, like, if there was a lot of people who applied, maybe we could increase that. But we just have to be really careful with the, the budget, right? And so we, we could ask that committee where they think that funding should be spent, or could it be spent on something else that the council or the city really needs? So it, it's, it's a fine line there. You want to be real careful with city dollars, and it can go up, but that's something that, you know, we can look at at a different time too, depending on what the event is.
All right.
And the 25,000 is not a set limit. It's what's budgeted based on the revenue created by them and is based on the, one of the four categories that we fall under. And so, yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think there's a larger amount, as you alluded to, in the ending fund balance for that fund right now. So there's a potential to allocate more. It's just we only receive potentially around that 25,000 each year. But there is more than that that we have in the ending fund balance.
I just didn't want anyone listening in to think that, you know, if they were, if they were to put an application in next year, that may, maybe the two that's on here right now would get less. But it's, it's, you know, just get the word out. Let's get the applications in, and we can worry about the other things later. Okay? All right. So that, this is on the consent calendar. So.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now Jeff Betts will stay. Oh, and then we add Parks Project Manager Donell Dale to review the purchase of the restrooms from CXT for Evergreen Playfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Councilmembers, Donell Dale, Parks Project Manager. We're here tonight to review the purchase of a prefabricated restroom and concession building from CXT to replace the existing restroom at Evergreen Playfield Complex. The agenda tonight, we've got some background and history, location. We'll talk about the purchase itself, the timeline, and answer any questions that you may have. As you may recall, we have a, we are in the process of designing several upgrades for the ball field and tennis court, part two, phase two of improvements at the Playfield Complex. Part of those upgrades will include building replacement of the existing restroom. When looking into replacing a building, we had a couple methods that we reviewed, one of them being a custom build, where you would have a architectural, architecturally designed structure, and then labor and material costs. These exceeded our budget. So we then looked at prefabricated buildings, looked at a couple different companies, and found that CXT was the affordable option. So what is currently existing is a structure from the 1970s. There is a men and women's restroom, a small office, a chase, and a storage room. The office was, was originally used by the Athletics Department, but is now vacant and mostly used as storage. Location is at Evergreen Playfield Complex. It's situated most about midway, or in the middle of the park, between the turf playfield to the north and the ball field at the corner of 224th and 56th. The new restroom and concession building will provide services to parkgoers that are utilizing our turf playfield, the ball field, tennis courts. It'll also support our events like Tour de Terrace and National Night Out. This is the purchase and a depiction of what we are purchasing. It's a prefabricated structure that will arrive on site in preassembled blocks or segments that will be pieced together. They'll be craned in and assembled, similar to the restrooms that were installed at the Ballinger Boat Launch. We'll have both men and women's restrooms, two family-style restrooms, concession area, exterior bottle-filling station, storage room, and chase for utilities. The restrooms will come with stainless steel sinks, toilets and hand dryers, electronic hand-free flush valves, hand dryers and faucets, LED lighting throughout, and electronic locking doors that can be programmed. Our intent is to have this work demolition and installation completed prior to construction of the ball field and tennis court improvements, which are slated to start in August. Once we complete the purchase and get, we will then get an approved set of design plans to start permitting, as well as coordinating utility work for the connections in the new building. We'll complete site preparation with a compacted gravel pad and coordinate delivery, which is up to 180 days out from purchase, and work on getting the mobilization set up for the crane and installation. So tonight, staff is recommending the City Council move forward to approve the purchase of a CXT restroom and concession building on the state contract for Evergreen Playfield in an amount not to exceed $620,000. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Are there, Councilmember Sondar?
Is the other concession coming down?
Yes.
That was my question. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Two questions. First one, anytime I see not to exceed a number, and I've been on the council five years, I know that's what we hope. years, I know that's what we hope, right? I've also been here when, as soon as we start digging in the ground, so that's my way of saying, any concerns of up the street here in that space right now in terms of when you demolish that and we discover, oh, it's actually quicksand? This asking, like, do we have any concerns like that? So we brace for somebody coming back to say, well...
Overall, there's $700,000 budgeted, so the purchase and then plus any additional utility work that would be needed, you know, we're hopeful that it'll be within that range.
Best we can ask for. Second one's a little more uncomfortable, but since you had the slide up there, you can use that as the example. Have we had any, I'm going to call it misuse. I would probably like to refer to it as abuse, but we'll call it misuse of the bathrooms that are currently beautiful at the Ballinger site that we need to be concerned about closer to I-5 access, if you will.
You know, I think that they've been pretty successful so far down there. Everything that we've heard from Parks Maintenance and then also police, I mean, there's going to be occasional issues and we've had very minor vandalism, but other than that, no, I think they've been really successful. And we've had some other issues at this Evergreen site with existing restroom in the past. And so we're definitely aware of that and that's why we're trying to make sure we choose fixtures that are going to have that longevity and they're easier to clean and maintain. So I think this, the style of restroom gives us a lot better ability to do that.
Thank you both.
Are the restrooms locked at night?
Yes.
Oh, good.
They'll be locked all the time, right?
No, I should say, they have a timer. They're on a timer setting where they'll lock after use. So our field lights typically are going to be going off 10 or 11 o'clock at the latest and that's when the lights, I should say, is when the timer would click on and lock the doors for being able to be accessed. There are ways that people defeat that occasionally. We've seen that in the past, so it's something we're aware of.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, well, I know that's a very needed item. We've been waiting for that for a while.
And just to mention, this is on consent next week.
Yes. Thank you. And then so next, it's the two again to review the supplement three with Burger Partnership PS for Ballinger Park. What does PS mean?
Good evening again. This item is a contract extension request for Burger Partnership, the design agreement for the Ballinger Park Viewing Platform and Trails project. This project will complete another piece of the Ballinger Park master plan with a focus on the west side of the park, which has been mostly identified as the passive area. The project aims to create east-west pathways and connections from the interurban trail, which is like the west part, west entrance to the park. And then building off of the Lake Ballinger ecosystem restoration project will make connections with the vehicle bridge crossing near the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse and the boardwalk crossing of Hall Creek, which is closer to the lakefront. Another piece to this project is installation of a viewing platform requiring in-water work with a fish window starting July 1st through August 31st. We started design work back in late spring of 2023. Since then, we've completed site exploration, survey, geotechnical work, habitat work. We've developed trail and pathway alignments throughout the west side of the park, again, making those connections to the boardwalk crossing and bridge crossings. We've identified impacts to sensitive areas, created mitigation plans to offset those impacts, developed designs for the trails, asphalt, mulch, gravel, boardwalks, as well as located the viewing platform and the park portal entrance on the west side. With a plan set in place, we are now ready to move into the permitting phase and continue coordination with our various regulatory agencies. Our revised timeline to complete the permitting and finalize the design would start this month with ecological permits submitted, finalizing the portal and viewing platform designs in March, hosting another public meeting to give a project update, final plans for review in May, and work on construction permits later this summer or fall. Our intention would be to bid early in 2025 with construction slated for summer of 2025. With the revised timeline, we're looking to extend our contract with Burger Partnership for a full year with a new expiration date of February 28th, 2025. There are minor additional costs associated with the time extension, one of which for project management and coordination and additional design funds to support the boardwalk sections, which were not originally planned. The total amended amount would be $25,932. With that, staff is recommending that the city council approve the execution of supplement number three to the local agency A and E design agreement with Burger Partnership in the amount of $25,932, which makes a total contract amount of $430,260 for the Ballinger Park Viewing Platform and Trails project and the new contract end date of February 28th, 2025. With that, I'll take questions.
Are there any questions?
And it's on the consent agenda.
It is, and I just wanted to emphasize, so this is a date change as well. Originally, we did plan on doing it this summer. So, hey, we're running a little bit behind schedule because of regulatory issues. So there will be, we knew there would be some length of time that would take to go through permitting and so we're recognizing that and we are not trying to push it through so fast that we are, you know, stumbling over ourselves as well as the core project that's currently down there as well. So we want to make sure that we are, you know, doing everything we need to do to finish a quality project. And so this does not push us over budget. This keeps us still under the total dollar limit of what we expect construction and design to cost at this point.
Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff, for naming that. And I guess just when we think about kind of park completion, I think that is the right approach and appreciate that that is our approach. And when we talk about park completion, because I know that'll be the question that the community asks, what are we looking at at this point, given the known variables?
As far as like the entire parks completion?
I mean, the project, yes. Well, I mean, I don't, the completion of the work that's in progress.
Okay, so the Army Corps Hall Creek Restoration Project, we are still on track to be spring/summer this year to be able to open. There's still a few different items that are up in the air that we're working with them right now on. And so we've seen a couple issues with bank problems and we're just trying to work through some of those issues as well as some of the micro piles they're currently doing still in the water down there. So very interesting project and they're doing a great job and so is Tenista, the contractor. But there are going to be a few things and some adjustments once the dry season comes around because they're going to have to replant some of the plants. In the typical projects, plants die and there's going to be more die-off because of all the flooding also. So there will be new plantings that go on and so, so that project, we're expecting it to still be done this spring or early summer. So the viewing platform, though, would be the summer after. So there will be a break.
Okay.
Between.
And just as far as usage of the park, because I think that's where the question usually comes from, I guess how does that impact, what parts of the park likely will be available for usage in the next year and a half?
Absolutely. No, we're hoping that west side, what we want to be able to do is open the west side of the park by this late spring, early summer. So I know we've had a few questions on social media that we've tried to answer the same way and that's, that's what we know right now. We'll see what happens in the future, but that way they'll have more access this summer. There still probably will be some areas where all the plantings are that people won't be able to walk because we want them to grow, right? But I'm hoping to really just at least have some of the connection points from the interurban to the bridge and those kind of pieces ready for people to cross, but we'll see. We need to work with Tenista and the Corps on that and it's, it's city property, but it's also a core-directed project, so they're the project managers and Tenista's the contractor, so we need to work through them to get those kind of things adjusted. But that's where we are right now, that we know.
Okay, awesome. Well, thanks for all of the work and the updates.
I don't see any other hands going up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City manager, do you have a change in the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of, well, just one. So we already had a public hearing scheduled for the Transportation Improvement Program next week and we've just dropped the work session item for the discussion tonight for the Transportation Improvement Program. We'll continue that public hearing next week and provide you all the information at that time. And the other one, PS is a professional services organization. It's all the, share, all the owners are licensed in their respective professions.
Thank you. Okay, so next is the review and vote on no protest annexation agreement at 4713 240th Street Southwest with our associate planner, Sarah Pizzo.
Hello, good evening, everyone. All right, so I'm Sarah Pizzo, Associate Planner, and I'll be going over the annexation agreement proposal for 4713 240th Street Southwest. So I'll start with some background information, including an update on the annexation for this property, provide some information about annexation agreements, some analysis for council's consideration, make a staff recommendation, and discuss next steps. All right, so just to refresh, because it's been a while since we've been before you on this property, but 4713 240th Street Southwest is an unincorporated island within the city of Mount Lake Terrace, or within the Mount Lake Terrace urban growth boundary. So it's unincorporated, Snohomish County currently. And the property owner came, made a request to council to annex into the city of Mount Lake Terrace to receive sewer services and we've moved through the process with council. We, there was a petition that was signed. We received approval to move forward with the Boundary Review Board at Snohomish County. Planning Commission reviewed the zoning of the property and held a public hearing. Staff did file a notice of intent to annex with the Boundary Review Board and through the process, the county discovered an issue with the northern property line and the legal description. And so we're currently working with the county and the property owner to work out that issue. And then once we get that worked out, we will move forward with the annexation process, but it's been on a little bit of a hold as we work through those issues. And so the property owner has requested to hook up to city sewer services before completing the annexation for a couple of reasons. One, the annexation is taking longer than expected and their septic system is failing. The property owners do still intend to proceed with the annexation as soon as the legal description issues are resolved. So some information about annexation agreements. The comprehensive plan says that annexation into the city or an annexation agreement is required before providing city services to unincorporated areas. And the municipal code 1305190 says that sewer services can be provided only to structures within our city limits unless otherwise approved by city council. So some analysis to consider, the engineering department has reviewed feasibility for services, sewer services to this property and determined that the property can hook up to the city sewer system. And as I stated, while the property owners are working through the legal description issue with the county, they would like to address their failing septic system and council may approve city services being connected to the property on the condition that a no protest annexation agreement is executed. And here's a map, sewer map of the city showing 4713 240th Street Southwest outlined in the dotted, or the dashed line in the available sewer that is just adjacent. So staff recommendation, staff recommends that city council approve the connection of city services with the following conditions. One, execution of a no protest agreement, which will include service extension agreement provisions. And number two, that the subject property must complete the annexation within six months of the agreement being signed. So next steps, given the urgency of the problem and the property owner's desire to annex and connect to the city sewer as soon as possible, this proposal is brought to council at the earliest opportunity and so you may vote on this agenda item today. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions before? Go ahead, Councilmember Sondmore.
My question is, I know where this piece of property is and I knew, I thought we were going to be doing something on that road as well, but I thought we had one incorporated area left, like on 214th and more towards 244th, so I wasn't really aware of this one not being incorporated. I just, was just kind of surprised. Is that, is it just that house?
No, so there are multiple, but just this property was already in the process of annexing. Yeah, they reached out or they requested to council to annex about a year ago and we came to council a few times about this property specifically, but that process is taking longer than expected and so they're hoping to connect to the city sewer, but it is not the only property that is unincorporated.
Okay, because I was wondering, yeah, that, it's kind of a unique road and I remember years ago when they were building on it and it's just, it's a very unique, I don't know, I like your street. It's just different, you know, and it's, do we know if other people, and I feel for the owner who has a septic issue because that's no fun to have to replace, but I, just curiosity question, are other people on that street going to annex as well? Is it, since it's just one house at a time, it doesn't make really a big difference if they, because usually they annex mostly together, but this is just a unique one? And so it looks like the hookup is right outside of his home?
Yes, there is sewer available right outside of this property. And then all the properties on this map except for 4713 are already incorporated into the city of Mount Lake Terrace. So within this view, it's only 4713 that is unincorporated and requesting city sewer services.
So this is the only one on the street that isn't connected and is not, is an island?
Oh, I thought you said there were others that, oh, there are.
Throughout the city.
There are others throughout the city that are not incorporated.
Yeah.
In this view of this map, 4713 is the only property that is unincorporated. Yeah, I would have to check to see that there are sewer accounts and hookups for all of these properties, but theoretically they are all receiving city sewer because they are part of the city limits.
Is it possible, not right now, or any, to get a list of all of our unincorporated ones? Because I thought we just had just a small pocket, so I was so surprised to see this one on the list.
Yeah, actually, I've been working on a list with all the right-of-ways as well. I know it was something that was brought up the first time we talked about annex. I know it was something that was brought up the first time we talked about annexation, and it's taken a little bit to put together, but I've been in discussion with the county about all of the areas, and especially looking into the right-of-ways as council had brought up previously.
Okay, Councilmember Murray had her hand up first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard, and thank you, Sarah. I appreciate the presentation. I think this makes a lot of sense from a failing septic system surrounded by city land, as well as the intention to move forward. I guess my only question for you was, the staff recommendation, you know, has the condition of annexation, annexation of the subject property within six months. What happens if that doesn't happen, given we're moving forward with, if we were to move forward, we would be doing that prior to the annexation?
That is a good question. Kristy, if you have any input on that question? I think we just wanted to ensure that there was still this condition for them to annex, and that that doesn't drop off or get forgotten. That's not a direct answer. Kristy, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the intent is that we want to make sure that when we're providing city sewers, or city services to properties, that the city, that the properties are annexed, and so this is just recommended condition to make sure that we're following through with the intent of the annexation. The time period that we have outlined here should be ample to rectify the situation of the one northern boundary line with the county.
Okay. Well, I will assume, I think it's good to have in there, I appreciate that it is included. I'm excited to welcome new folks to Mount Lake Terrace officially, and assume that city staff will navigate that if need be, so, thank you.
Well, Councilmember Woodard had his hand up.
Actually, that was my question.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Salmar?
Can I just ask, do we have any other thing going on on that street? I swear, a couple years ago, we had looked at something else that was going on on that street.
The cottage housing is on that street.
Yeah, there's something.
Related to construction, capital.
I just was wondering if the construction, if there's construction going on, would it, is it going to tear up the roads? I see shaking heads back there. Tearing up the roads or different things that are going on that might do something to the sewer system on that street? Because it's a very unique street in Mount Lake Terrace.
Not that I'm aware of. They would just be connecting like a lateral sewer line, just connecting into the stub. These are very engineering terms for me. But this, this is what I hear.
I'm not here to set you up. I was just, it was just a curiosity question.
So if any construction does take place on that road, whether it's a city, the city is doing anything with the road, or a private contractor is, any damage that is done will have to be rectified by that contractor?
Oh, my question was going to go somewhere else, but I think I won't say it right now, but it was more if it was going to be a single-family house hookup. So I'm not sure if I can ask that question.
It is a single-family residential use. There isn't, as far as I'm aware, any development proposal there. It's simply to connect to city sewer services to serve that single-family residence.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assuming that there are no further questions, I will put the question on the table. I will move to approve city services for 4713 240th Street Southwest based on execution of no protest annexation agreement, with that condition that, that annexation must be completed within six months from date agreement is signed.
Second? I would just call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a happy homeowner. Okay. Was it worth staying for?
You're right.
So we're skipping nine, so we're going to go on to public comment, and we did have a...
Did you still want to speak?
Yeah.
Well, you'll have to go up to, yes. And just state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Wow, this is interesting. Yeah, my name is Robert Prida, so I'm the owner of the property that you guys just voted on. So first, just wanted to say thank you, guys, for taking the time to get this, this next step going, and also to thank Sarah. As you saw, the timeline, this has been going on for quite some time, so, pretty happy to have this, this step done. And just a couple of other clarifying points, I think, to the idea of construction on our street. The city was forward-thinking at the time, so all of the infrastructure that we need is already in place. It's, at this point, it's a matter of just gluing one piece to another, and then we're done. So, yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think we're just trying to navigate the, the official route to get to here, that was the tedious part, so, but we're there. So thank you again to Sarah, and thank you, guys, for, again, for taking the time. So, that's all, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have?
Welcome.
Yes. Do we have any more public, anyone in the, I guess?
There's, no one else has signed up, and there's no one in the online audience.
Okay, then we'll move on to the review of the next meeting agenda, which is changed now. We're just going to add another item.
So don't necessarily need to add another item. The public hearing is already listed on the agenda for the 15th.
Okay. We can't hear you. Okay, so next is council comments. Does council have any comments?
I mean.
We have 35 minutes. Okay, so I don't have any, anyone with their hands up? So next is adjournment. We're adjourned.
Well done.
Thank you.
We could have gone another hour if we kept the other agenda item on.